Good evening and welcome to the 2022 City Council Mayor Ross is being brought to life by the people here nice and friendly closely on the safe YouTube channel thank you for joining city clerk please call council member Benson
over here
council member Watson
here
council member Holloway
here
council member Mayhew
here
council member Ripley
you
let the record reflect
I'm here
council member Chris and council member Duck
here
mayor and mayor Duck
I am here
your right municipal commission for speaking be sure to raise your hand we have the first item this special business which is to approve the agenda and motion to approve the roundtable agenda vice mayor Wilson Mayhew second customer petition says to approve the agenda hearing now that's your hands raised so all of the papers stand
hi
may I pose my the agenda is approved so tonight's event is a closed session pursuant to RCW 420 at 1:47 or P the plan or adoption strategy composition to be taken during the course of any court of proceeding or a unit of the possible made in negotiations of proceedings while in progress session will go until 6:50 PM to return to our next conference meeting
thank you mayor mayor you're in addition to councilor salt Mr. Sauerline Mr. Houtte, Mr. Hornby and I believe Miss Ferguson
yes
and consultant here
right so no action to be taken by conclusion of closed session the council will adjourn directly from the whole session being at 7:00 PM for the council meeting we have a second session link yeah everyone has to see the second session link so leave this meeting and join the other let's see what I mean
Now seven P M. Council please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
Please give the right of United States of America and to the Republic where we just stand. One nation under God, equal to digital liberty and justice for all.
Thank you also that we're in show that all council is present including council of the state and virtual. Now to our first item and bring the business to approve the agenda. As we have motion to approve the agenda.
So.
Sorry. We find your intent may you second my customer Christian said. That's with any discussion. Being them, all of them, there's the I.
Aye.
Aye.
Any pose name, this is an address and the agenda passes this group. This is the public hearing, hearing portion of our meeting. Tonight we have public hearing regarding the twenty two dash zero seven six, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four by any effect. On our chief group, please check and see if anyone has signed it on the sign up sheet. Open the public hearing. And proceeding that community is invited to provide comments regarding the proposal of the dot ordinance number twelve seventy seven to twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four by any budget. Those wishing to speak during public comment and sign up, yes, speaking list will be called on and or according to the signature. Is there anyone online that would like to come during the public hearing? If so, please reach your hand. Not see. You know that line written in hands. To attendees. So. Unless our people would be say so. Being them. You have come to the end of our public hearing and I have declared public hearing on twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four by a bunch of those at seven oh two. At this time, we provide time for residents to comment on items not made in the. For go through the, go through the ground rules. Is there anyone online that would like to? Be very make comments and not anything that would be in a or a city call. Let's see if we can get the hand. We refer into the considered agenda, which contains approval of city council meetings from the number fourteen front table meeting, the number fourteen regular meeting. Fifteen special meeting and claims approval report dated in the direction twenty eight, twenty twenty two. Eighty two dash one four two approval of the memorandum understanding with Northwest compliance exam. The eighty twenty two dash one four six approving consultant services permit. R H two engineering funding and design of people late water reclamation basin improvements. Is there motion to approve the considered agenda?
So.
The move by your votes and make a second my customer Johnson. Great public comment regarding any item on the consent agenda. So please raise your hand. Chambers or. Have those ready for session? Captain Johnson.
Yeah, really excited for this number in the but. And no, I'm more random of understanding that Northwest Trump lines, I guess, in the same way you. I do think this would be a wonderful thing for our. Real to find a way to get it done.
You have come. All of the favor say hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Any pose name? So you can ask the consideration that is approved and we're very excited to have in view with Northwest company. Moving on, we thought of agenda, it may be twenty dash one five two, increase ordinance, certify increase of property taxes. This is the second reading ordinance close sixty eight in reference to making, would you please read this somewhere in motion.
The city of Snoe requires a regular of eight nine six hundred and twenty five thousand, seven hundred and eighty one dollars. Which includes a point eight three percent increase in the property tax revenue amount of sixty nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety five dollars. From the previous year in order to discharge the expected expenses and obligations for the city of Snoe. To adopt ordinance number one two six eight, certify an increase in the regular property tax revenue for the fiscal year commencing January first, twenty twenty three on all property. Both real and personal in the city of Snoe, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue. To carry on the departments of the city for the ensuing year. And providing for severability and an effective date.
Second. Twenty two dash one five two certify increase in property taxes. If there any public comment regarding these items. Put right their hand. Online. Councils or any discussion? All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any pose name? Pass unanimously and ordinance approved. Next is A B twenty two dash one five three, property tax, let me ordinance, let me property taxes. Does it mean we ordinance twelve seventy, you know, approach and make, would you please read the summary and motion?
City of Snoe requires a regular letting through eight nine six hundred and twenty five thousand, seven hundred and eighty one dollars. Which includes an increase in property tax revenue from the previous year and amounts resulting from the addition of new construction and improvements to property. And many increase in the value of state assessed property and amounts authorized by the law as a result of any annexations that occurred and refunds made. In order to discharge the expected expenses and obligations of the city. Move to adopt ordinance number one two seven zero, letting regular property taxes for the fiscal year commencing January first, twenty twenty three. On all property, both real and personal in the city of Snoe, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue. To carry on the departments of the city for the ensuing year in providing for severability and an effective date.
For second.
Second.
Motion by her potential make news, having the customer one, twenty two actual five three, living property taxes. Public comment regarding the item. If it's involved or online. That's a third discussion. Being them, all of them. Say aye.
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 Any pose name? Motion pass unanimously and ordinance twelve seventy is approved. Moving on to. Excited. It's A B twenty two dash one five nine, working parking enforcement, which is up to our current Snoe basis code. Press reading ordinance twelve thirty one, customer purchase said we could read this summary. Section ten point oh eight, line oh one L, this Snoe use of code, it has parking vehicle on the street for more than twenty four hours. This ordinance clarifies the code verified that a vehicle must be moved to different block every twenty four hours. Section, it's moved to adopt ordinance twelve seventy one.
Seven.
As you say. This is the first. This is the first time. So is there. Before you. Is there any public comment regarding this? Raise your hand.
I thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to point out that this is the first reading, so motion and second can't be taken. Um. I'm curious to hear from the chair of the committee. On the reasoning behind this. I don't understand why we would ask residents to move every twenty four hours.
Well, this had us brought from what I was saying last week. The police have been receiving a number of phone calls in area. This is an ongoing issue with the folks that are living by panorama. There are a number of vehicles that. Refuse to move their cars because they're broken down for the reasons. Obviously to with a number of non local progressants up there. The city is currently looking into other potential programs, including a pilot program up there to address some of the current issues. But it is mainly to, was it the whole of the term being used by.
I'm sorry, Kara, I could not hear what you, where did you say this was an issue? You said up there, where's there?
Up here. It's an issue of folks parking over by panorama. And leaving their cars for long extended periods of time when those cars are not even operational. You have to know or to, it has to use a significant amount of police resources in order to arrest the shooter. Mr. Vincent.
Additionally, one of the issues that Captain Lynch brought up and his officer said people are being marked to move their vehicle. And so they'll roll it three feet so that it's moved and then they'll leave it. Many of these vehicles are not running, there are people doing work on the cars on the street. So the idea is to ask them to move it a block away. To eliminate those issues. And in addition to that, in the meantime, the city is working on coming up with a pilot program for parking permits in the area. In the hopes that that might have helped the situation.
Right, so the code already requires you to move your car every twenty four hours. Just making it a little bit further.
Yeah, I'm not really sure how this would work unless our police are literally going to be targeting one community. I mean, my neighborhood, there's nowhere else to go. I don't know where those residents are parked, I need to be fighting over spots so that they don't get a blind. Were our police really only going to be using this toward that one spot? And if that's the case, then I'm fine with with dealing with this issue, I definitely fear that it's an issue. I'm just not sure that this is the way to do it. I wonder if we can have a code that says that if a vehicle is going to be parked on the street, it has to be operational, operation. Anyway, yeah, so you know, if your car's broken down, you gotta get it off the street. Now, I wonder if that's a rule that we could have instead of this, because again, I just, I don't see how this could be enforced in a way that's ethical to the entire city. Whereas some, some of the other ideas that I've heard as well, they had parking permits on some areas, that's something reasonable to me. Anyway, I just not sure that this is the way to do it right here, but I definitely support it.
How for a standard, Congressman.
Thanks, Mayor, yeah, I agree with Councilor Johnson. I unfortunately have called the non emergency line at the police station several times over vehicles where they've been parked in front of our house and left there for weeks on end. Every time I call, I'm told there's no enforcement. There's no, there's no, nothing that can happen, there's, they can't come out, they, they can, they, they won't tell me who the neighbor is, just so I can have a friendly conversation. And they won't contact them. So I, I don't know whether there's an, there's even even an enforcement mechanism here by making it twenty four hours. And I fear that this is just, you know, going to create a problem in one area. I, I do like the idea of having it be, you know, something in an ordinance that indicated your vehicle must be operational. Much like. Where somebody's just abandoned their car on the street. But I, then there has to be something, but I, again, I also don't think this is the right, the right thing by saying twenty four hours. You know, I, I'm on a, I'm on a business trip until Friday, does that mean I have to have my wife go out and move my car? Every night, that just doesn't seem reasonable when it's parked in front of my own house.
Yeah, I, my concern with this was identical, because I live in a house with six drivers and we don't drive every car every day. So that was my concern as well. But I, this is, this is for a specific purpose. This is not so that the police can go around and become meter maids all over town. And I proactively enforce this with every car that they have an inkling might have been sitting there for twenty five hours. The idea is that there already is a huge problem, a huge problem that we knew was going to happen. When the, when panorama was proposed, because there's one street going in and out of that community. And I, and it's, it's being abused by people who don't. I, there's not a parking in panorama for all of the cars of people who live there. And then in addition, there are people living in panorama. We don't, who aren't on leases, so there's, there's, the, the problem already exists. And what Captain Lynch and his officer, I can't remember her name. Off the top of my head, but I, the point they were making is this problem already exists. There's, this is already a huge issue that they need a tool to address it with. The tool of, you know, the twenty four hours, as the mayor pointed out, is already the law. That's already the case, you have to move your car technically every twenty four hours. Again, the police aren't going around looking for every car that hasn't moved in, in a day and chalking it all over town. That's not the point, the point is frontier is a nightmare. And right now they're working on a longer term solution, but in the interim, there's already a huge issue that the police have to deal with.
Yeah, so my thought is, maybe we could do the following. This, as has been pointed out by several council members, is taking an existing code, already requires twenty four hour movement. It's just clarifying, how far does it move me? It doesn't be three, it means something at least a block. I, I think that whatever the time interval is, whenever we say you have to move vehicle, it's going to have to be in ten fourteen more than three. So let's pass this, because all that's really doing is clarifying how far you have to move it. But then we also ask the public safety committee to look into whether this shouldn't be a different amount of time. Say seventy two hours or some other amount of time, except in zones that are marked for shorter periods of time. So maybe look into this concept, there's been mention that the police department's already looking at some other concepts as well. Maybe asking you to come back to us was something that both addresses whether twenty four hours should be default citywide. And then maybe gives us recommendations regard to maybe there are certain areas where, where that would be the case, but sort of think through the time period. And then whatever change that is, well, still, whenever we ask them to move, it'll be at least a block is what we're saying here. So let's pass this tonight, get that clarity and then ask the committee to come back to us. Then up to distant future and address, address your twenty four hour question.
Yes.
Well, I, I. Second, I would hope that also the committee could look into the idea of disallowing cars that are ignorable to park on the street. As they're looking for this. My, my overarching concern with this is that I think that the intent of this is to have an ordinance that applies to the entire city. With what sounds to me like a fairly explicit intent to only really enforce it in one community. And while sure, there may be a token time then someone goes out and says, oh, that's one over in a different part of town that hasn't moved, great. Now we've spread it out, we're covering the whole city, but it sounds to me like the intent is just targeted one community. And I think that that has been used historically against a lot of different communities in, in our country to try to kind of marginalize them. And not feel like they're fully members of the community. I, I just really don't like how this feels like it's targeted. So I will not be voting for this, but that said, if it does pass, I still want us to do what is best for our community. And I hope that the committee would also look into these other items. That's all.
Guys, comes more life with the wind blows, the police are not going to be out there writing tickets on trash, although we have a law. Okay? Always reply, tradition should reply police force when there is an issue arises that needs. And I have vehicles in my neighborhood parked on the left side of the road where it's parked, signed, no parking. I get to see that enforced, I'm not that concerned, I'm a little concerned facing wise, but it's not at the level where I would say. I need somebody going down the deficit towards our today. That it's a level of irritation, they need the mechanism by which they can apply this. My caution, so they said move it and have to find move to another one. My caution on the operational thing, they really do need tech device from the police. It becomes hard to tick, ticket a non moving vehicle and know that it's not operational. You would have to have the owner, you know, contact the owner, bring them out, turn it over, move it three feet and say, okay, good. So. Careful making this too complicated and making it. Too complicated in consideration that laws are not applied a hundred percent of the time, twenty four hours, seven days. There is some discretion and some need where there's mass, where there's frequent. Breaking of that law that we focus on a matter. Where there's not so frequent and it's not really an issue in the neighborhood, we don't need to spend police officers time doing that, they have other things that prioritize. Don't make this too complicated, they just want a mechanism by which they can go through and say, that really hasn't moved enough. And what we're doing is get a mechanism to find that enough.
Mr. Christian, did also want to make a comment, Representative Johnson made in public safety to where he also handles most of the parking enforcement issues. Let us know that to the extent that someone does call in, she goes out and she'll reach out to the owner of the vehicle, shred of contact after trying, why the car isn't being moved. It's not like she's by out there aggressively, but she's responding to neighbor complaints that they're seeing just so brilliantly and they really need a remedy. To be able to handle that as an issue. That's what I say.
Yeah, so when this comes up for a vote at the next meeting, as again, this is the first reading, so we should not be voting tonight. I also will not be voting for it, I'm sort of disappointed in the conversation. I guess we're going away from no call too small in our city. I guess we're going away from, you know, community conversation instead of in, you know, discussion about issues and. Trying to find all, you know, alternative, non aggressive ways to deal with things. I feel like this, this, this whole addition to this ordinance is just targeting one neighborhood. And, and it would feel far much, far better to me for our, you know, excellent police. Force to go out and speak with the ownership of that, of folks in that neighborhood and speak with the residents of that community and try to come to a solution. In a, aim of a global, non ordinance method. I, I, I understand frustration of, of residents and I understand how that feels because I felt the same way. But I certainly didn't, I don't feel that we have to have a law. To ask people to move their cars.
Any other comments for this? First reading, I think we're using before December twelfth. Being them, we got to, please send us A B twenty two dash one six two, the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, by any budget amendment, this is the first reading of the ordinance, twelve seven two. Your potential make, please read these summary.
The first reading of the amendment, 1272, Representative May, please read these summary.
The intent of this ordinance is to amend the 2021, 2022 biennial budget to enable the city to establish the appropriate fund structure prior to the start of the 23, 24 biennium and to account for the remittance of school impact fees to the Snoqualmie Valley School District. The city of Snoqualmie will have an additional appropriation of 11.5 million. That includes an approximately 4.3 million reduction in expenditures and a 15.8 million increase in transfers out to other funds within the city to support these two proposed amendments.
Thank you. Any comments regarding this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. This agenda bill is really a couple better to the 23, 24 biennial budget. The intention of this is to help simplify our fund structure so that we can increase overall understanding of our budget looking forward. In essence, we're reducing the number of funds that we have across the city into the 18 that you see as part of the budget. And so we would request that you eventually adopt this ordinance. In fact, we would ask you to potentially waive the meeting requirements around this because this is really important to the 23, 24 biennial budget itself. If council happens to pass the 23, 24 biennial budget, then we will also need you to adopt the 21, 22 budget amendment as well because without one or the other, what we've kind of structured so far within our 23, 24 biennial budget is not possible. We'll have to come back for the budget amendment this year. So thank you and I'm happy to answer any questions in the gap.
Is there, councilor, desire to wait to be sent reading this ordinance because of biennial budget? Move to a council rules, exceed your 96.22 and adopt the ordinance number 1272. The report of FMA is AB 22 dash 100. Quickly, salaries scheduled for non-represented management and professional employees. Please read the summary and motion.
The purpose of this agenda bill is for council consideration of the 2023 salary schedule for non-represented management and professional employees. Agenda bill is a partner bill, agenda bill 22 dash 76, the 2023, 2024 biennial budget. Move to approve the 2023 salary schedule for non-represented management and professional employees.
Just a second. Second. Representative May, in the second, I'm going to follow away. To approve the 23 salary schedule for non-represented management and professional employees. Any comments regarding this? So, Representative May, online. Want to, councilor, hear any discussion?
So please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is this is the implementation schedule for what is already in the vote of it, a three and a half percent cost of the government for non-represented employees. And this would implement that salary schedule and that bullet increase as contained in the budget. Sorry, I meant to mention one thing there, which is there is separately a review of the salary schedules going on. That's something that we'll see in the future. This is to implement the three and a half percent that's in the budget now and and implement that across the representative.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, my question, and I'm not sure who to address it to, is that I don't know if it feels, maybe it just feels premature to me to be passing this agenda bill or voting on this agenda bill prior to a budget vote so that we know where those numbers stand and can, you know, zero in on what these are. We did have some, you know, we've had some good discussion over the last several meetings about what goes into our budget for the next biennium as it pertains to salary positions and 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 those sorts of things. So I I just, I don't know who to ask, but I'm trying to figure out in my head is that we are we maybe one meeting premature for pushing this forward?
Yes, that was a question we addressed at the beginning, where we talked about the sequencing of these bills for exactly the reason that has just been raised. Our thought was that this appeared to be something that the council, certainly the majority of all the council, seemed to be in favor of the 3.5%. And so the sense was that this might be something we were willing to pass prior to the budget such that then we got to the budget, this was already in place to implement it. So obviously, we can resequence it, but we thought this sequencing appeared to make sense, given sort of the sense of the council on this matter.
Any further discussion?
It it seems it seems pretty clear that 2022 is not going to be here when we're going to skip the call.
Representative May?
Aye. Aye.
Any close name? That's what I was saying to you both.
I voted aye muted.
Sitting at the AB 22 dash 150, the 253 salary schedule for non-represented management and professional employees has passed. Second, please report, FMA is AB 22 dash 162, for non-represented management and professional employees group. Representative May, give me the key to these law and motion.
The purpose of this agenda bill is for council consideration of the benefits package for non-represented management and professional employees. Similarly, this is a partner bill to the agenda bill 22, the R76, the 2023, 2024 biennial budget. Move to approve the benefits program for non-represented management and professional employees effective January 1st, 2023. Section.
It's new by, maybe, and second by, Councilwoman Watson, to approve the bill 22 dash 16, benefits for non-represented management and professional employees group. Right, probably current director. So please take your hand. Representative May, I want to be mentioned in September. That's a great discussion. Seeing them? Representative May?
Aye.
Aye.
Representative May? To test unanimously, the benefits for non-represented management and professional employees has passed. The third thing we form for FMA is AB 22 dash 158, incentive bonuses for eligible employees. Representative May, please read the summary and
Purpose of this agenda bill is for council consideration of an incentive bonus program for eligible employees. Move to approve the incentive bonus program for eligible, non-represented management and professional employees.
Representative May, can I hear you again, say, Representative Colley? To incentive bonuses for eligible employees. In line, the warrior and company members. And, so is there any discussion regarding this? Councilwoman May?
Yeah, I'm still struggling with this, everyone. I understand the reasoning. I understand the purpose. I I I continue to go back to the idea that if employees are being paid at a wage that is competitive, that is responsible to their position and within the the, you know, surrounding communities. I don't I don't see where a bonus program is is necessary. I would I would rather see these these dollar amounts go into salaries for excellent and outstanding. I I would, I I'm just not comfortable with a bonus incentive for someone to to receive when we should be paying that in their regular salary and and their regular benefits.
Councilwoman Watson?
Okay, this is one time when council member LaSae and myself have some shared thoughts. I guess my concern is, have we done an analysis of surrounding communities to see if we're kind of an outlier? Or this is pretty commonplace? I know people stay because the people they like working for. Because of the the work environment, it's not always about the pay. Sometimes it is. So I guess I'm on the fence.
Would I can speak to this? That's your, when I said, you guys, you guys are going to.
Um, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I I believe that you all can hear me. Good evening, council. I'm remote tonight because I I visited the grandbabies and had some airplane air, so I have a bit of a cold. But I I have received some some various information from surrounding cities, other communities that are looking to an incentive bonus program as another tool for retaining employees. And so I think as part of our previous conversations, we talked about incentive bonuses being used in various ways. There are a fair number of our neighboring communities that are offering these one-time bonuses to folks in in an effort to retain them. They are stretched out over a couple of years. Some communities are providing for a bonus in the in the, you know, next 12 months. Some, again, are extending it longer term, but it is another tool in the toolkit. And and you heard our our consultant in the class and compensation study talk about pay philosophies. And so it could be one of those philosophy changes. And essentially, this incentive bonus would do that, but it is to assist with ensuring that some folks stay with the community. And that is something from a from a data perspective, if the if the council would be interested in us providing a kind of community by community review of of what they are proposing to do, that that's something that we're happy to provide at a later date.
So, Councilwoman Hall, you had your energy. You want to speak and then, Councilwoman Benson?
Yeah, so I want you to pay attention. One bullet in there, there's no incentive bonus for employees who receive a sign-on or recruitment incentive. Those employees have received those and they are structured similar to this to take it out and hold that, you know, incentivize that employee to stay for a while. You know, the rest of the workforce at this stage, which is not incentivized, they're on salary to stay with us. So this kind of plugs that hole, gets it in place and spreads it over time, so it is a retention incentive. There may be issues with, you know, two people doing the same job, one having a sign-on moment and one having been here for 10 years. That actual sign-on incentive incentive to the other employee may be a disincentive. So let's plug that hole, put this in place.
Councilwoman Benson?
Yeah, I just say again that we've had everybody who is in a managerial role in this city say how hard it is to to keep people, the police talk about what happened, what it costs us as a city when we lose a police officer, for example, and and, you know, how our city staff has been working shorthanded for all through COVID. And, you know, we we did hire some people during that period and we paid them good signing bonuses in order to get them hired and to say to the folks that that were the steadfast 10 soldiers doing the work that whole time, that you know, these brand new people merit a signing bonus because they're brand new. You guys, you know, you're going to have to stick with one leg. It's not, it's not, it just doesn't feel right. So I think I think we have to recognize the fact that people have been doing, not just been doing their job over this time. They've been doing more than their job because there haven't been people in those other jobs. And they've been picking up all the slack. So this is not a, I mean, yeah, we could, we could get away with not not spending this money on our city employees. In my opinion, it would not be moral to do so because what we're really doing is paying them for that extra effort, that that extra commitment. And, you know, the argument's been been made, once you give them a a bonus, then they're out the door. We've given bonuses already to people who did that and they just happen to come through our door and now we paid them that money. I think that the employees that haven't received received that bonus have demonstrated that they're committed to Snoqualmie by staying through all that time. And if we don't recognize that, then I don't think that we can pretend that that's important to us.
Councilwoman Christensen, is your time?
Yeah, that tracks very similarly to what Councilwoman Benson said just now. In my mind, this is very important that we do have the bonuses to recognize the incredible work that the city staff has been basically handling in terms of all of the vacancies and the positions, just having to lead in with COVID and everything else. We have a ton of wonderful people in the city who really put in a lot of work and that it's fair to recognize them for that. And that we need to to bump them up so that they're at the same level as folks who came in with incentive bonuses. We're also looking to try to keep the quality of people that we have now in a market where other cities basically offering sign-on bonuses and everything else. And I think it is important to to recognize our city employees and make sure that
Councilwoman Johnson?
I think that others have said it well. I I think that this is one particular hole that was created by actions earlier on this year. And I think that it it feels right to do this one. However, I do not believe that this is a sustainable. However, I do not believe that this is a sustainable path forward for us to retain employees, to continue coming up with new ways to give them more and more and more and more to try to keep up with cities that are much bigger than us, that have more resources than we do. Eventually, the bottom's gonna fall out. So I do support this one, but I think that moving forward, we should tread cautiously with these kinds of actions to try to keep incentivizing employees to stay because eventually we're gonna get outcompeted by other cities.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Councilor Vincent?
I think, I think those are really good points, Councilmember Johnson. But I would say that I, I don't think anybody did anything wrong by, by, by giving the sign-on bonuses for the people that we hired. And I don't think that those people were wrong to take them. I think we needed those positions filled and we did what we needed to do to fill them. And, and your point about income and salaries is, is valid and terrifying. And, you know, when I go by Taco Time and think, wow, I could make that for managing, that's not bad. I, you know, it's, it's a, it is kind of a whole new world with compensation. And, and I hear you, I don't know how it's sustainable.
Any other comments? And none? All those approved, yea?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Councilor LaSae, what did you vote for?
Per council procedures, a non-vote is a yea vote.
All right, so.
Abstain, all abstain.
You can abstain, it's either. A. So let's see, is it no? Okay. So the vote has been six to no, six to, six to one.
Six to no.
And if the nay is, Councilor Witten, thank you. And moving on. Next item is legislative priorities. Councilor Christensen, to, to lead us in this discussion?
Yeah, do we have the document? Great, and so, so councilmembers, we are going back to the discussion that we had on our 2023 legislative priorities. We spoke about this a few times last month, I think on October 24th, very briefly. We received some verbal feedback at those meetings and it's been incorporated into the draft above. Haven't received any additional emails or correspondence or comments since then. And so we're hoping to move forward and work on the finalizing our legislative priorities now, or at least hopefully by the end of the year. So currently, housing affordability, the community center and public safety occupy the top positions in terms of the highest priorities. And we've tried to identify some specific asks. This has been my pretend the last meeting. As we move forward, it'd be helpful to know generally how people feel about the current draft and whether this generally fits in line with councilmembers' priorities and if there are any large changes for those. And if not, maybe we can down one. Is there any further comments?
Councilor Witten?
Are, are we going by order or are we just? You can draft and make sure that everyone says, okay. I would move public safety to the number two position. I'm still not totally convinced the community center is a, this biennium. It may be.
So you're saying the community center would be number three?
Number three.
Your pro, Tammy?
Yeah, I think that's a really good point about the timing. What I'd suggest, I think having three things as highest priorities frankly is a mistake. Just having interacted with these state legislators, if we can be very clear, this is the thing. This is the thing that snubwarming really needs. And just really be crystal clear about that, it dramatically increases the chances that we get that thing. We're giving them a document here that has several items on it. They know these are important items. But if, if our highest priority is one or possibly two things, I think we have a much higher chance of those things happening and then really taking that to heart. A lot of this has to do with frankly, what the eight of us elected people sitting up here then do with this document. I'll tell you that for the last two years, several of us have gone and met individually with each one of our state legislators, sometimes multiple times, with this document in hand and talked to them about how important this was. And that really drove home that, that we really meant this. So clarity of message I really encourage. So what I would say is, I would also make this observation with respect to the Parkway funding. We asked for funding for that from the state for many years in a row and we got nothing. And then we got the $5 million. I think sometimes when you're asking for money, you need to let them know and you need to let them plan for when they're gonna put that into their legislative base. So my recommendation is, let's put the community center expansion, request that $5 million for the particular time period we think we're going to need it. So it's requesting $5 million in state funding from the 25, 26 biennium, I forget in the math right there. Say that now. So that gets on the list and I think we significantly increase our chances that that then happens. But I would still put it at the top. Frankly, I'd lead with that. I think that's the biggest thing, it's a specific dollar ask that they can put in the budget and they can think about putting in the budget. I'd lead with that. Maybe have public safety because this is such an important matter as our number two. And then have the others, which, I mean, these are on our list because they're tremendously important to our community and to us as, as the elected leaders of that community. So I don't think it takes anything away. But I would, I, I think we have a chance to be more powerful if we just have those top two. Add the timing of the community center amount. And I would recommend moving, moving housing and portability to the, the other.
Top of the other.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you have Councilor LaSae?
I, I agree with one thing in that conversation. And that is that we need to be specific about what we're asking for. However, under no circumstances, as a council member, can I prioritize a luxury item, a choice for recreation over housing affordability. We don't have businesses if we don't have housing for our community, you know, employees to work and live nearby. We, we don't have, we don't have a community center if we don't have public safety solved. So I do not believe that we have to have one highest priority. We, we have three highest priorities. It should be housing affordability, then public safety, then community center expansion. We didn't always have the Parkway as the number one item. But we were persistent. And we were consistent with what we're asking. What I agree with is that we should target specifically the S, that 20, 20, 25 and 2026 biennium. And start asking for it now. So that the state has time to plan. But I believe if we're, if you're putting them in an order, it should be housing affordability, public safety, then community center.
Councilor Vincent?
Um, but to that point, I, and Councilman Mayhew, you have better idea of this than I would. Is there, are there, is there one of these three that you think that we would have a better chance or a bigger impact from the state if we prioritize?
There was a nay.
Yeah, I, I think Councilmember LaSae's comments are, are well-taken. I, I, I think really that in these discussions, when we're asking for a specific thing, that's, actually, I, I think, I wish I'd have said it this way earlier. Kind of focused my mind the way that Councilmember LaSae worded it, which is there's specific asks and then there's a little bit more broad asks. When I look at what we've said in community centers expansion, it's a very specific dollar, not, and if we amend it for a very specific time period, then I think we're making a very specific ask. The public safety items are very, appear to me to be very specific asks. The housing affordability is a little bit of a more broad ask. So that's really what was going through my head, frankly, not a prioritization from when I realized I said it poorly. Once I heard Councilman LaSae's reaction to that. So I, I think, I, I think, having thought that through now, we have two specific asks and a broad ask in our highest priorities. I, I think, I think that'll be fine. I think we can use this. I think honestly, having that moved there though, and with those specific asks, it then just comes down to how hard the eight of us, as well as the rest of the community, but in particular, how hard their eight of us now push this with our state council members. So I, I'd say let's get specific about the time period on the $5 million and then I think I don't have any further comment.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, my concern about housing affordability, the way that it's written is that if I were to go to one of our state legislators and say, hey, we really want this, I do not feel empowered by it to say, oh, here's a policy that Oregon did or that Spokane just enacted the same policy that I strongly support personally. But I don't feel like I am empowered by the council to advocate for that as a council member. You know, kind of speaking in a way for, I don't know, more than just myself. So that said, I, I definitely support having housing affordability, of course, up there. And, and I'm not sure if we at this point as a council have something in particular in mind that we could say, hey, let's get this in with regard to housing affordability. Anyway, those all kind of, just a long way of saying that I, I'm fine with having the housing affordability on there, but it is very broad as it's written. And, yeah, and I, I would certainly still advocate for it in those broad terms if this is what we approve.
I think there's some wording that we could find that might have more meaning to it than just the overall, overall wording that we have. A lot of this, so I worked on the SVGA legislative priorities. And if you look at AWC priorities and STA priorities, you know, the housing affordability is in there, the public safety, each one of those is in there. And then increased revenue options is in there. And so we're talking about something very specific to us. It's the community center expansion. And I have been talking, every time I talk with, every month with each legislature, I push the community center expansion. It's actually in our budget, it's starting 2024. And this is a biennial year that they are going to be, this is where they're gonna create their budget for the next two years. So if you're pushing out to 2025, you know, I think it's good to have it now. So perhaps it'll put the bug in their ear and they'll say, oh, you know, when something comes open, other types of money comes up, if we don't make it in the capital fund, maybe there's some other type of grant they would recognize that we could buy. So that should have been a specific here and there. There was a nay.
Yeah, as you say, I think the mayor's comments are fantastic. I think, so, so here's the thing to remember how the state budgeting works. We're going into the, the big budget year. So they, we look at the budget just as we do, we're not jumping out too sweet, but in a similar way that we do, which is there's the big budget year and the little budget year, right? The big, this is a longer session, they do a, a biennial budget and this is where the initial budgeting for the whole biennium happens. Next year will be enough smaller, just tweaks to the budget. So to the mayor's point of spending starting in '24, a lot of it, yes, '25, '26, which is sort of my thinking, but some of it starts '24. So what, the, the point would be if they have confined money in this biennium, maybe not all of the bi, but maybe some of it, or maybe all of the bi, if we actually restrict ourselves to the '25 biennium, we actually might have just talked ourselves out of it, a shot at some night. So now that I think about it, maybe we should be a little bit smarter in the, the timing. But I think the more specific about the timing we can get, so maybe we want to put something in there in '24, '25, '26. You know, the more specific our ask, the better chance we have. I would say, I would also tell you that in the discussions with the state legislators, when we talked about the $5 million, there was a period of time when they were talking about doing some portion of it one year and some portion of it another year, even possibly a different biennium. So they were just looking for amounts they might be able to find to help us and they sort of came up with that option. In the end, they found the full $5 million. But I guess just reflecting on that, as I heard the mayor making her point was, I think we let them know how much we need and we let them know a timeframe, we give them the maximum flexibility to try and help us. So let's do that. But let's be as specific as we can on these requests. But I do think housing affordability as written, they will appreciate that this is important to us, but I think it will sort of go into the hopper with all the other requests. There's almost every city's making a request for that. This is a big problem in Washington State. But I, I think, you know, the more specific we can get, like we are in the other two, the more, the more likely we are to get it.
Councilor Vincent?
Yeah. All right, so maybe we could figure out a way to do something like that with housing affordability as well, though. If there's some specific thing, you know, I'm thinking back on the, on our last negotiations with, on the mill site, it seemed like we were hamstrung in what we could do in order to make affordable housing happen. Maybe there's a specific ask where we could say, hey, if, if we'd like to have X number of dollars in grants available for us to assist developers, developers in creating affordable housing. That's just a nonspecific example. But we did something along those lines where we had a specific proposal that we could put in there that we would be able to use and, and have on the books so that a developer could see, oh, look, there's, there is this available if I want to come in and build affordable housing in Snidewong. That could be a, an actionable thing that somebody could use to actually create something.
Councilor Witten or Councilor Christensen?
So back to housing affordability, and I was having a discussion with Representative Callan today, coincidentally, and that's if we focus on one area and it's, it's coming through the Department of Commerce at this huge increase of 30% AMI and below for us between now and 2044, seven, over 700 units. And then additional almost 1,000 units at 60 and 80% AMI. If we could focus their attention more somewhere in that range between 30% and 60%, and give us the tools we need to develop what we can absorb because we cannot absorb 1,700 new affordable housing units. We just, we don't have land, we don't have water rates. But we need assistance. I mean, if we're looking for more specificity, it would be in that bandwidth and help direct commerce because that's coming directly on us, more so than a lot of our surrounding communities as well. and help direct commerce, because that's coming directly on us, more so than a lot of our surrounding communities as well.
Councilor Christiansen?
I was just going to make a comment that looking forward to next, looking forward to next year's legislative priorities, we may also have some additional information and additional ideas for how to go forward with housing affordability, considering what Councilwoman Walton is doing right now with her companies. So we may want to leave this all a bit more vague at this point in time and then circle back this time next year with some concrete asks to the legislative legislators.
Any other comments? So I would ask if we can leave the date off on community center expansion, because we're also going to go after King County Parks Grants. The application is open soon, and so if we can get funding, make sure the following were given to those grants, and that would be, I think that's what we're wanting to do, right? Instead of, you know, we don't want to touch 2025, then we lose that change for the grant. So we just leave, leave it off and show how important it is to us. Tells our legislators and it tells our King County Councilor. Representative Timmy?
Yeah, I mean, to that point, when we were asking for, I mean, for the part where we didn't say a date, that was something more that we kind of were able to talk about. So the key here is we're asking for an amount for a specific purpose. I think that's a really smart thing for us to do. And we're, I think, we just ought to defer to your guidance on, you're looking at all the pieces. So I think we ought to defer to your questions.
Any other comments? Moving on then, to the next item, this is AB 22-076, the 2023 to 2024 biennial budget. This is the second reading, ordinance 1267. Representative Timmy, would you please read the summary and motion?
Have plenty of information there? I'm just curious, with regards to the last item, what is the next thing that will happen? Will some modification be considered or sort of what, what happens next? I just wasn't clear on that.
Councilor Christiansen, did you want to revise the draft or did you want us to do that?
Um, I, I can do that right, but I was just.
If you want to do that, then.
Okay.
So revised draft will come back to us, is that correct? Thank you. Shall I proceed there?
Yes, please.
The purpose of this agenda bill is to adopt the 2023-2024 biennial budget. There's legislative history included. Move to approve ordinance 1267, adopting the 2023 to 2024 biennial budget.
It's moved by Representative Timmy and seconded by Councilor Vincent to approve the biennial budget. Is there any further comment regarding this item? Get mine, take this to hand up. It's not, and there's one in City Hall. I'll let this ring in their hands. So council, is there any discussion? And we have, I think, Commissioner Dubutte, who could also go through the different changes we've had. Representative Timmy?
Yeah, I think I only have one significant question remaining and I, sorry, the chief manager didn't kind of draw this out at our last meeting. So I wonder if you could kind of help with this. My concern is around the fire truck, not the ladder truck, the fire truck. And my concern is, hopefully I'll say this well. My concern is I believe that the total cost is somewhere in the range of $900,000. And what I think is true, but maybe you can help us know, is I think it's true that we have not funded that amount through prior budgets into the ERNR fund. In fact, I thought perhaps we'd only funded less than half a million from prior budgets. So what I'm worried about is if that's the case, then we might be spending $400,000, in essence borrowing it from other vehicle, you know, other ERNR amounts that have gone into the fund. That's not the part that worries me. The part that worries me is that then that might hit the operating budget of the fire department going forward, meaning that both '23, '24, as well as future years, would have higher charges because they would be needing to recover that amount that we hadn't previously funded of the $900,000. So if it were short $400,000, it would be in essence burdening future operating budgets of the fire department to tune in $400,000 over some period of time. And so my thought is that if all of that is correct, that what we ought to do is fund the remaining amount of that fire truck now out of one-time money, which I believe we have that money available in Fund 001, such that we relieve that extra burden on the fire department for '23, '24 and future years. And if all of that is correct, I think we're still in a position where we could pass the budget tonight. We'd in essence be passing a budget that had allowed for higher charges to the fire department in '23, '24 than is necessary. But just because we budgeted for that doesn't mean you have to do it. So you could adjust later downward and leave that pressure on the operating fund, on the fire department operating budget, if we fund the rest of that fire truck. So that's what I think is true, and I don't know if, so I sort of talked a little longer so you could think it through, but I don't know if you know the facts necessary to respond to that, but that's the one big concern I have left.
So let me see if I could address that. What you have conceptually, what you just talked about, is a very dynamic system, right, in essence. And I wish we had much of that dynamic system in place for the most part. What you described overall is, you know, certainly a concern for this administration too. This is a $900,000 vehicle purchase, right, overall. If it were to inflate the replacement price of this vehicle $900,000 by 3% over the next 20 years to figure out what is that replacement value in 20 years, we would then, as you know, how would replacement charges take place? Is we would subtract out the surplus value of that vehicle and divide it by those 20 years, and that will eventually result in a increase in replacement charge to the fire department and will hit the general fund as you suggested. You know, in regards to that, the vehicle purchase itself likely will not take place until about 2024. So in terms of the charge to the fire department currently, we haven't built in anything for '23 and '24. So likely the charge as a result of this purchase, well, likely you'll see that as part of '25, '26, what I can imagine. I think that hits maybe about a couple of your points, but feel free to chime in with any additional questions.
Do you have follow-up for the next, Councilor Halliwell, then? Representative Timmy?
Yeah, so just a follow-up. So understand everything you just said, that sounds, it makes sense. The part that I'm worried about, I actually assumed all of that was as you said. The part that I'm worried about is the, not the future, future replacement, say, 10 or 20 years from now.
Where is the additional money coming from?
Yeah, the one that we're actually going to buy in '24. What I'm worried about is, my belief is the ERNR fund does not, I'm trying to say this well. The ERNR fund has cash because all of the different pieces of equipment are getting money into it. So we have a cash balance. The issue is that I know that you guys have a schedule and each and every vehicle has an amount that we've collected for its replacement. And say if it's a five-year life, you collect over the five years, such that at the end of five years, you have the cash to replace it. What I'm worried about here is that there's one piece of equipment, we never did that, if you will, we never did that correctly. As we, all other pieces of equipment, to my knowledge, are being done that way, meaning we funded the initial purchase and then we've charged for the replacement. My understanding is that fire truck is the one exception to that, and that in fact, there was an issue when we, I don't know exactly the details, but basically when we brought it on, we were short the amount of replacement charges that should have already occurred, so to speak, from prior years. So we made a choice as a council for the remaining years to only charge per year that amount that would have been charged had we been charging for the full life. That left us short by the amount we never charged. And my belief is that that short amount right now may be about $400,000. And so that's the part I'm worried about, is that if, if we short the ERNR fund by just using cash that's actually for other vehicles, we're going to have to make up for that $400,000. And the only way you get money into the ERNR fund, well, there's two ways. The normal way is we charge the operating budgets. So what I don't want is the operating budget of the fire department to get hit for that $400,000 over future periods. What I want us to do is say, oh, wait a minute, we got a problem in the ERNR. This piece of equipment, we're short 400 or whatever the correct number is. Let's transfer one-time money in and cover this thing so that we don't burden the fire department for future, in future operating periods, to pay for something, because they're already going to have to pay for the eventual replacement of this thing. So they shouldn't have to pay both for the eventual replacement and pay for the fact that we never charged them for the short. So in other words, we never planned to do this. We always planned to come up with that other $400,000 some other way. I'm saying, let's do that. Let's, let's not burden future operating funds because we're short on this $900,000. Let's put the money in now and do it. We have it. It's in Fund 001, we're reserving it for one-time purchases. I think this is an example of that. Let's do that.
So what I'll say is, indeed, my belief is you're certainly correct about that, that we've not collected enough over time in order to purchase the fire ladder truck, ladder truck, my apologies, the fire engine at the $900,000, which is going to cost us today, right, for the most part. But I don't think the intention necessarily was for us to play catch-up afterwards, right? So I think that's maybe just one difference from what you're talking about is, okay, if we haven't collected the full $900,000, we're going to be playing catch-up, right? Or to kind of backfill or replenish the ERNR fund for that. That is something that we typically don't have there, and I don't think we necessarily have the bandwidth to try to figure that out necessarily. The other point that you made is you mentioned that this felt like this was the only exception to our ERNR fund. You assume that our replacement costs of our vehicles have increased 3% annually, which is what essentially our fleet manager has been assuming. Vehicle prices have increased at a greater percentage than 3% over time. And so you will see, eventually we do have this issue across multiple vehicles where we have not collected enough, right, in order to actually pay for that replacement or to replace that vehicle at its cost, basically, all of a sudden, for the most part. So that is something certainly that we know internally. We have proposed, or at least kind of described this issue a little bit with the council through the kind of ERNR refresh, such as time that Vinicius has been here, for example. We've kind of returned to that periodically just to kind of check in a little bit. But it's something that we certainly need to deep dive into and explore with council next year especially. But this is, my opinion, by no means the fire truck, the fire engine is no means the exception, right, necessarily.
A dollar amount, wouldn't you, right?
Well, yes, absolutely a dollar amount, yes.
Councilor Martin?
So my question for Mr. Butte is, when we look at the ERNR fund and say there is a $400,000 discrepancy on a piece of equipment that would be in our fleet for 20 years, are we really talking about a $20,000 a year charge to the fire department? Or would that be a $40,000 a year?
Well, it's, so, you know, take the $400,000 and slide that by 20 years and you get, yeah.
You get about $20,000.
Representative Timmy?
So move to amend the budget ordinance to transfer $400,000 from Fund 001 to the ERNR fund to cover the shortfall associated with the fire truck. Seconded.
It's moved by Representative Timmy, seconded by Councilor Vincent, to amend budget ordinance to transfer, to transfer $400,000 from Fund 001 to the ERNR fund to cover the shortfall associated with the fire. Are you talking this year or are you talking next year?
Sorry, I was to amend the '23, '24 budget to do that, yeah.
There is something to say. Any discussion regarding that motion? Councilor Martin?
I have to ponder this a bit. Given the amount of work that the accounting finance department has done, the fact that we have an ERNR budget that is far superior to what we've had in the past, that we've recognized going forward that we have a process in place that didn't exist before, and also based on the fact that it's a, you know, the end of the biennium will be receiving this truck, therefore charging the department at $20,000 a year, it doesn't seem to be significant enough to raise a concern. So I'm not in favor of it, because I think.
Representative Timmy?
Yeah, so just the only final point I'd make on this is it's, this is not a recent development. We've been running this ERNR fund for many, many years. This is one of the, I think, things that this council and the past versions of this council should be most proud of. Most cities would be, just give their left arm to be where we are. I think to run an ERNR fund, continue to run it well, means fully funding it. Don't let ourselves start down a path of, it, it's an attractive target because by the nature of how it works, there's always cash in there. Because you're charging and it's building up until you buy the vehicle. So, or whatever the piece of equipment is. So it's a five-year life, at any given point, you're probably about two and a half, you know, years in. So you have, it's just a, it's a target. And I think it's a tempting target for us as politicians to go after. My point of view is let's just keep the faith on this. Fully fund this ERNR fund all the time. We can do it. We have the money, let's do it. But to keep this thing fully funded until and unless we just can't, and I think right now we can't.
Councilor Halliwell?
So I'm probably in full agree with what you're saying. But I'm concerned that I haven't, I need more analysis out of the fund. I mean, we can, I'm at a not yet. I need more analysis out of the fund, that what we haven't been charging in Fund General, is this money available in the ERNR fund overall or not? Probably not, but we need to do that analysis and understand that. And then what is the amount, is it 400, is it 300 or 500? It really needs to plug the hole, we could go all clear. I'd like some time for that analysis out of, out of finance, you know, board. And then we can do an adjustment to shift that money around for the one-time cost benefit. Totally agree with that, it's one else to see.
Is there any other comments regarding that?
Yeah, I was just going to say the fleet manager has the information on what funding level we're at, I mean, to the vehicles. He spoke to this, to us maybe six months ago. You may remember, I erroneously thought the number was a different amount, and he clarified the amount that it was short. So he, he actually tracks this, he can tell us this number if I need to. Please, Billy?
Councilor Halliwell?
We've also talked that the rates have been not 100% on. If there are overages in the other, we can take advantage of that and offset some of this cost. I agree with you, but we're, we're focusing now on this point. Not just did it, the money collected so far has funded itself, but has there been other money collected beyond replacement of other vehicles that could offset this cost overall? And before, the other one, I think we're prone to call into the future ER fund rates, which are related but separate from this action because they're based on replacement value from the car. Not any of the shortage or whatever we have here. So I, I, I just, I see no reason why not do that analysis, come back to it and do it.
So, from Drew to another one. Well, my perspective is this fire truck is critically important to the fire department overall. And I think the fire chief who's behind me here right now is, you know, interested in potentially bringing some sort of legislation here shortly regarding that fire truck. Any additional stalling will potentially stall that fire truck that we may bring to council and so.
Well, I'm not stalling. My question is, is the ER fund overall short of money available to purchase that fire truck, in buying any of those trucks?
Is it short of the money available, so we have not built up any sufficient bucket for that truck? Right? In essence, but there are, there's certainly other vehicles, right, that we are setting aside money for to have sufficient cash balance, right? To potentially purchase this vehicle as long as we're given the appropriation to do so. But it's going to create problems for other vehicles down the road and we will continuously borrow against other vehicles as we proceed. This is certainly an issue that we want to fix. It's one that I've been kind of focused on for the most part, even though I haven't necessarily had enough time to really delve into it with council. But it is certainly a priority for this department. When our finance and HR director got here, I made sure that the first thing that she knew is that we struggle with our internal service plans here at the city overall, right? I've acknowledged that, I think, for time and time again, and it's something that we definitely need to focus on. But we have a fire ladder truck, not a ladder truck, my apologies again, a fire engine, which is twenty-plus years, for example, at this stage right now. It's critically important that if we need to set aside the funds in order to kind of get through this time period, we need that appropriation given to us in order to do so. So my recommendation is to approve the amendment as put forward and, you know, let's proceed from there.
Councilor Johnson?
I think you probably just answered my question, but I was wondering, do you feel confident that four hundred thousand dollars is an amount that is enough, but also not egregiously over? Will we need to make up that difference? It's four hundred thousand dollars, which is the current amendment.
So the difficulty is I don't quite have a recollection of what that initial replacement of vehicle was. This would suggest that what we had set aside initially or what we were planning for was five hundred thousand dollars. That does to me sound about right. But I'm not going to sit here or scan in front of you and say for certain that I have that. So, I mean, the mayor just asked a very important question. Can we potentially fund this this year and not next year? For example, maybe incorporate this as a part of our twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget amendment as we would probably bring it forward back to you in December the twelfth. So I think that's a very important consideration and yes, that certainly is possible, you know? And I would suggest that, yeah.
Mayor Potemehu?
I'm fine with whenever we fund it, as long as it's prior to when we spend the money. And so doing that, I just don't want to, I just don't want to borrow against those other vehicles. So I think doing that as biennial, what is, I think, absolutely, equally solves the concern I have, so.
It's a transfer, so it's not a purchase of the vehicle, which would, was without the occurred until next year or twenty twenty-four, for example. So, yeah, a transfer is easy for us to make. We can get it into this budget.
If we just to clarify?
Excellent.
So then potentially what we could do is not pass this change to the twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget appropriation. We could pass it as part of the twenty-one, twenty-two, which we'll be voting on at the next council meeting. That would of course change the opening fund balance for the twenty-three, twenty-four, but that would be fine. We're not, the budget is an appropriation. It doesn't.
Right.
So that would be fine. You just have to update some schedules, but that would be fine.
Correct.
But I think that's, that's great. It's a great solution. So then we would, so we would not pass this tonight, mayor, is your thought with regard to this particular budget, the agenda bill we're talking about now? We would take this up at our next meeting as a change to the twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendment. Is that correct?
I'm proposing that we pass this budget tonight.
As is.
As is, and then we would do the twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendment.
Really quickly on this, we're planning on bringing the agenda bill forward for the next meeting for the purchase of the fire engine. Included in that is options that include so much payments up ahead. So with that option in there to purchase that, the overall cost of the vehicle aligns nicely with what's being proposed. I just want to share that with you so it's not a surprise next week.
Makes even more sense why you're suggesting that.
Yeah, that's why I was saying.
Okay, so then maybe we vote this down and proceed.
I would draw my second.
Well, fortunately we can't do that, but we can vote it down.
You can withdraw a motion by the mover. Permission of the group.
Nay.
All in favor of the two men just in twenty twenty-three budget ordinance to transfer four hundred thousand dollars to zero zero one, from two zero zero one to the ERR? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
So that just fails. Right? Any other comments regarding the budget? Hearing none? Okay, all of us in favor of approving the biennial budget, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
And six approving the budget and one opposing, Councilor St. [inaudible]. Excellent. Thanks for that, Drew Guteknecht. Good job. [inaudible]. So the next item is mayor's report. Okay, so there's some things going on. First of all, the communications group completed a website redesign. I think many of you have seen it or you've received a link that shows it. They spent many months rebuilding these pages and working with city plus designers, thinking website easy to navigate. And it's more user-friendly and easier to find information. And so there's lots of how-do-I tabs and static buttons where you can actually, you know, click on the little button and you can see the videos or documents or agenda amendments. And it's very creative. It showcases artists by, a part by a CNN artist and also a local photographer showing our natural beauty. So it just goes live on December ninth. And nice job. Thank you, Dan McColl and Gil. Public Works will be providing seven-day water shut-off notices to our customers that have not paid their water bills. This is based on the updated policy recently approved by council ordinance number twelve sixty-nine, which does allow payment plan. And so all customers have been given this option and are also referred to services that could provide financial assistance. So we may see some potential calls in the future. Our application for the jurisdiction, route and jurisdictional transfer of St. Paul's Parkway to the Washington State Department of Transportation is under review and so it takes several months. We'll learn further findings in May. And as we had, there'll be probably comment and hearings later this summer. So this happens could potentially save millions of dollars of maintenance and repairs relative to the future. And the city clerk will be sending out a poll to council of potential dates for council retreat next year. You should see that next year or so. And to what Councilor Button was talking about regarding the Department of Commerce, we submitted a letter to the public comment by, inside by all four city mayors, so North End, St. Pauli, Parnation and Duval regarding the projected housing need, methodology and numbers as a result of the House Bill twelve twenty. And so the numbers show a significant increase in affordable housing requirements, including the zero to thirty percent AMI, raising concerns about transportation connections, buildable land with services and accessible social services. And what changed in House Bill twelve twenty was that the Growth Management Act Housing Goal Statement moved from encourage the availability of affordable housing to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments. So we actually are setting an appointment with the Department of Commerce in the next few or so to kind of talk through our letter and our concerns. And I think finally, Saturday, we'll have this St. Pauli Winter Lights, which is an annual holiday tradition in historic downtown. And this event starts, goes from five to seven PM when Santa will arrive around six thirty PM for the holiday lighting countdown and railroad park. So that's all I have. Is there any commission reports? Council, what's the liaison? Okay. From City Attorney, do we need a second session?
Yes, we do.
So please the previous second session link?
The familiar is the KDS.
Yes, okay. So council, we will have a second session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one I triple I to discuss litigation or legal risk of a proposed action or current practice that the agency has identified when public discussion of litigation or legal risk is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the agency. And how long do you think we need to take this session?
I would say no more than fifteen minutes, mayor, and yourself, Mr. Sauerwagen, please chief this session attempt.
All right, and then we will be back with possible action following.
Yes.
Okay. So do you guys need a five-minute recess? So then we will reconvene at nine PM for, for the council. So we're going to take a session and then come back at nine PM. Okay, we are now reconvened. It is eight fifty-six PM. Mayor Potemehu?
Move to adjourn, second?
Move by Mayor Potemehu, second by Councilor Johnson, to adjourn council meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed, nay? It is unanimous. Have a good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us.